Good evening and welcome to the May 3rd. Sorry, I really had to stop. The May 3rd meeting of the Town of Foxborough School Committee. Our first order of agenda item is the school committee reorganization. In attendance, we have Mr. Pearson and I in person, and then Ms. Ladani and Ms. Raymond are both attending via Zoom. Mr. Ruder will be joining us. I'm watching him come in the front door as we speak, so if you could just, if you all could just bear with us for one minute while Mr. Ruder comes in and takes his seat at the table.
Can they hear us? Can Sarah and Michelle hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess that's a yes.
Yes.
You are on a live microphone. We have started the meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
Drop off was drop off-y.
So, thank you. Mr. Ruder is now in attendance as well. As I said, the first order of business is the reorganization of the school committee. The first, the first position is for the position of chairperson of the school committee. At this time, is, we'd like to accept nominations from the other, from the committee on who might serve as the chairperson for the upcoming school year. Michelle?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Brent Ruder for chair.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sarah, you want to, are you thirding that, I guess? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay. So, all in favor of Brett Ruder as the chairperson for the upcoming?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, yes. We have to do roll call. Thank you. I forgot. I was used to this. So, Michelle, we'll start with you. In favor of Brent as the chairperson? Thank you. It was an I, Sarah?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Brent?
Vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and then I will, I will make that unanimous. So, congratulations.
Congratulations, Brett.
Thank you, I think.
At this point, we do the ceremony, ceremonial shifting of seats and go for the, the next position, which is the vice chair.
That's fine.
Okay.
You don't want to do it like musical chairs style where we go around the whole day.
This is my, actually, my favorite part is the ceremonial switching of chairs, so.
Imagine it would be for you.
The gavel's here. You have to, you have to have the gavel.
Thanks.
Can I keep your name, though? Darn it. Thank you. Thank you.
And at this time, so then, it's, this is live, meaning, okay, so I take nominations for vice chair. All right, folks, at this time, I'll take nominations for vice chair, if anybody would like to put any names forward. Yeah, Rob?
Can I nominate someone?
Yeah, you can, Rob, nominate someone, Michelle.
Richard Pearson.
Thank you, and I will second that.
Okay, roll call vote. So, Ms. Ladani?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
Mr. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
And I'll make that unanimous, so 5-0, and that means you are now the vice chair for the next season. Thank you so much for helping out again. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. I think I shuffled my papers, Mr. Canfield.
Yep.
Want?
Yeah, I do. That's it.
Here it is, right here.
Nope.
Thank you.
That's what you want, right there.
Nope, that's right. I left it over at the other chair. Thank you. Okay, and then, now we, I think we have to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing wage and contract negotiations with union personnel, specifically the, the FEA, the Foxborough Education Association, Foxborough Extended Day Staff, Foxborough School Drivers Association, and the committee will return to public session around 7:00 PM, and we'll be back on.
I move we go into executive session.
Second?
I second.
Okay, and then, we'll do roll call for that, all in favor. So, Ms. Ladani, are you?
Aye.
Ms. Raymond?
Michelle, aye.
Mr. Canfield?
Yes.
And, Mr. Pearson, and I'm also an aye. And just for folks listening at home, when somebody is on Zoom or on, even on a teleconference call, we have to do roll call vote, and that's part of the rules that the state puts forward just to make absolutely sure that everyone's above board about the voting, and that's what that's all about, so. So, we can begin our executive session? Thank you, everybody. So, we had just voted to end executive session and come back into public session, and we'll hold the vote on that after our first agenda item, which is our open public comment. Now, when it comes to open public comment, if there are folks here who are echoing some of the same opinions, you're encouraged, certainly not required, but encouraged, to consolidate your, your, your comments. We do ask that everybody who's going to make a public comment, please come up to the front, to the, where the microphones are at the table, because that's how FCA captures the audio, and everyone at home can, can hear, and then it gets taped and everything like that. Also, owing to the numbers here and the sheer tonnage of things on our agenda, we'll ask that folks keep your comments brief. I'd like you to keep them to three minutes or less. I'll, I'll keep time and wave, give you a bit of a heads up there, and there's that. And we'll, I'll go in order of that folks signed in, unless, of course, people who are, that I call forward, just say you yield to somebody else, and then that person can come forward.
Okay.
All right, so first, we have Ms. Julia Schibler, did I say it properly, of 675 Hill Street? When you come up, please just say your name and, and your address. Oh, one of these, thank you, that wasn't clear. One of, one of these chairs that look like they belong on Star Trek.
How are you?
Hi, thank you for being here.
Is that on?
Yes.
I wanted to wait to hear what you guys had voted on for the proposal for the teacher's contract.
Okay.
Before I made my comment, but, because I don't really, I don't know what the official thing was, I didn't know how it worked, but I will voice that I voted against what was proposed to us. I think it's, to be honest, disgusting to be offered 1.5% after everything we've been through this year. I think it's a real slap in the face, and I think it's disrespectful, and I think I needed to voice that, and, and more, I just think we deserve more. I've been working five days a week since July of 2020, when everybody was in lockdown. I put my life on the line, not knowing what COVID was, and to get that after everything I've put in is extremely discouraging, especially, I'm a special educator in the Ahern Middle School, and I'm in this sub-separate program, the most vulnerable group in this district in that grade level, and to be offered that is so hurtful in so many different ways, and I'm, I'm honestly disappointed in the other teachers that voted in favor of it, because to me, we're worth more. We're working our tails off harder than, more than ever during this time, and it's not fair to have inflation at 8% right now, and us, I'm gonna have, I already work two jobs. The fact that I have to work two jobs to make ends meet is wrong in itself, but that's not your issue, but the fact that I'm gonna have to take probably more hours out of my other job, and I'm working full-time, I don't get a prep. Everything I do is on my own time. I don't get compensated for that. I'm not asking to. I know that when you get in this business, that's what happens, but the fact that I don't get a prep and I'm gonna get 1.5% is heartbreaking. It's absolutely heartbreaking, and I just want it to be heard that I am not in agreeance if it's 1.5, and I am disappointed if you guys think that that's what we're worth, because all that you matter, all that, to when I get a 1.5%, I don't matter, and I'm not making enough to make my ends meet and to put food on my table. I don't think it's fair, and I want it to be heard, and I, and I thank you guys for coming to the table and doing what you do, but I think it's wrong that that is the offer and that that is acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
We'll be voting, just as a point of information, we'll be voting on the, the state of the contract after open public comment as part of the, what was in executive session. Thank you. Next up, we have, is it Ms. Healy? I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Hickey, come on up. Oh, Marsha Hickey, thank you, come on up.
So, actually, I'm talking about along the same lines, only for the ed assistance, and I'm not sure if I'm allowed to talk about that, because the contract.
Hold on a sec.
Hasn't been.
Marsha, can you say that question again? I'm so sorry.
I just came to talk about the same thing, for the ed assistance, what we've been offered, and how poor our salary is, but I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about that.
Unfortunately, yeah, in, in the same way that if I, as a school committee member, were on that bargaining unit, I couldn't talk about it until, until it goes out to both membership and the school committee.
Can I ask, like, if I don't, can I ask, like, how, how you come up with these figures that you do? Can I ask that? Like, what is the?
Yeah.
Like, how, what do we last on the list? And you say this is leftover, so we'll give it to them? I mean, some of our salary is a poverty rate, so, and I, I don't know, are we not considered a vital part of the school system? Because I think we are, but you want me to stop?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah, actually, thank you. I think we can speak to the generalities of that, because it's important to note.
So, the educational assistant contract has not been ratified at this point, and so you'll have a meeting with your association, and at that time, you can ask?
We did, we did, we had a meeting today, and we did talk, but.
And then, at that time, you could be able to ask questions, but I would, I would suggest going back to your association president to have those questions, that this is not the forum for that.
I understand. Can I just say, it's out of their hands, though, at this point?
Again, you need to go back to your association and those that represented on the negotiating team.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you, Ms. Hickey. Next up, we have Juliette Petrillo. And when I mispronounce your name, please correct it when you come up.
I actually, I was gonna ask.
And then, if you could, yeah, please, go, come on up. And then, if you all would, if you're coming to, to speak, if you wouldn't mind, please say your name and your, your address, kind of like we do at town meeting. That would be great, so we just have it for the records.
I think at your request, we had similar.
Sure.
Presentations.
Sure.
Some may choose to still go forward, and some have chosen not to, but.
Okay.
I'll just summarize what I have to present, and this is with respect to this class of 2022 high school graduation.
And then, Ms. Petrillo, would you, would you mind, just, if any of you are gonna talk, just for the record, just go ahead, just say your name and.
Juliette Petrillo.
And then, yeah, and you're at?
21 Leonard Street.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Hi, I'm Susan Avery, Temwater Street.
Lisa Poth here for King Philip, please.
Christina Olson, 5 Cherry Tree Lane.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. We come here tonight with the utmost respect for all of you as educators and as public elected officials. Congratulations to Rob and Brent for your election last night. We know that being an elected official and an educator is difficult, and that you certainly had an overwhelmingly difficult time over the last couple of years. I have on occasion questioned the decisions made by this committee, as well as the administration. Hopefully, you make those decisions in the best interest of our children. That being said, I also come to voice a concern in an appropriate forum with the intention of being heard, and I understand that there's a set policy for high school graduations, and that that is ultimately that of the principal. Since we are shortly out of a pandemic, pandemic, and attempting to return to normal, many of us, for a long time, will suffer the damages emotionally from it. That being said, I had a senior in the class of 2021, and I must tell you, the school did a fabulous job with that graduation ceremony. Mother Nature made it blazing hot, but the heat was quite out of the ordinary. With the exception of the 2020 graduating class, which you did a great job with those extreme circumstances as well, I've attended outdoor graduations at Foxborough High School. They were nicely done, but they were also pre-San Berns Field, so they weren't anything elaborate. I attended indoor graduations at Foxborough High School. They were nicely done, though hot and crowded, nothing spectacular like last year. That was simply spectacular. Here we are looking at a commencement, and the thought of an indoor graduation less than six months out of masking in schools and jamming unlimited guests into a high school gym, that's concerning for some, and though I do understand that people can wear masks, or they can stay home and watch their kids on Foxborough Cable Access, which I might add, they do a fabulous job, but for the most part, the parents want to be front and center for their children's high school graduation. We want to see those kids walk across the stage, and speaking personally for my senior, he has made bonds with children in this town that he has been with for 12 years, and those children are the people that I love like my own. Sorry.
Okay.
He's my last leaving Foxborough, sorry. We want to take our own pictures. We want to be able to see them cross the stage. We don't want to be blocked by the people who bring in 10 family members. We don't want to pay $10 a photo because we're gonna have a professional photographer take two photos. Well, that's great, but you got to pay for them. Why can't we see our own children cross the stage? In an outdoor setting, it was perfect. You weren't blocking people's view. Like I said, it was spectacular. This is just the major life moment in these, in these kids' lives, and honestly, in our lives, as their parents. I believe that as the educators and the faculty of Foxborough have worked hard at teaching our children that they have a voice, some students do not feel heard. They started a change.org petition to be heard, and from what I understand, it's not getting to where it needs to be. I respect the position of the principal and know that she doesn't make her decisions lightly. However, I think she missed the target on this one. We, as a community, have invested in a turf field for our athletes, and I want you to know, it's a beautiful backdrop for commencement. The photos and the memories my child and I have from last year are simply amazing. The likelihood of another 100-degree day in the beginning of June is slim, and yes, if it were to rain, being indoors is simply unavoidable. Why would you want it indoors? She's an exiting principal. Let's make this a spectacular commencement for her, as well as our students, and if you have any input to this decision, we request that you hold commencement outdoors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I'm gonna, I just want to quickly say I'm in complete agreement, Christina Olson, Foxborough, Cherry Tree Lane.
Yes.
I'm sorry, so, I just, I just wanted to say I'm in complete agreement with Juliette, and I've already talked to them, so we're all on the same page. That's really all I have. Thanks.
The only other thing that I wanted to add in, I mean, we all basically wrote the same thing, but I hate to use COVID as an excuse. Life has gone on, COVID, we're, most of us are immunized, boosted, but the elderly and the grandparents, I have heard from a number of different grandparents, friends, that their parents don't feel comfortable coming. Before I came here, I spoke to my mother today, about an hour or two ago, and she said, there's an outbreak in my building, and it's her only grandson, and she will not come to graduation if it's inside. We were recently in, at an event together where it was overly crowded, and the fear is real, the fear is still real with the immunocompromised and the elderly, and those are the people that are gonna want to see their kids graduate. My mom won't be able to be there, she has one grandson, she will not come, so that's why I'm here.
I'm just in a great, complete agreement with the three ladies.
In the air, too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Congratulations, Brett.
Very nice of you, thank you. And there will be, I'm just gonna give everyone a heads up, after open public comment, we're going to quickly vote on the issues from executive session, and then after that, we're gonna honor a few students with something, they'll come next and, and out of respect to their time, and then within the superintendent's update, which is the next agenda item after that, I know it is the superintendent's plan to speak to graduation a bit, and I, so I know everybody has families and places to be, but if you do want to hear it, some, some context on that directly, the super, I do know the superintendent will be speaking to that during the superintendent update portion of our agenda, so just as a heads up for that. And obviously, we can watch any of this stuff later as well, if, if, if you do need to go to attend, you know, your lives. Thanks. Next up, I believe we have Ms. Shelby Cornbluth.
I was just gonna, I was with them, I was, and it just wasn't space, so, and I believe that graduation should be outside.
Okay, thank you. I think we've attended to everybody on the list. Did I miss anybody inadvertently? Okay, well, thank you, folks, so much for, for being here. You're obviously welcome to stay for the, the whole meeting. We love having company, and, and especially for folks who want to hear from the superintendent's update, I do encourage you to stay. Barring that, though, move on to the next item in our agenda, is to have votes from the content of our executive session, which was to discuss, excuse me, contract negotiations with union personnel from the FEA, Extended Day Staff, and Foxborough School Drivers Association. So, up first, we're going to discuss, sorry, we're going to vote on the proposed FY 23-25 Foxborough Education Association collective bargaining agreement.
I would move we vote to, we vote for the proposed FY 23-25 Foxborough Education Association Professionals Collecting Collective Bargain Agreement as discussed at executive session.
Second?
Okay, we, again, we need to have a roll call vote, so I'll call each committee member by name, basically around the circle. Ms. Ladani?
Aye.
Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
Mr. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
And I'll be aye as well. Next, we are going to vote on the proposed FY 23-25 Extended Day Staff MOA, memorandum of agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll do this one. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed fiscal year 23 to 25 Extended Days Staff memorandum of agreement as reviewed during the executive session.
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Raymond, for seconding. And again, roll call vote. Ms. Ladani?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
Mr. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
And, Mr. Ruder, I'll be aye. Lastly, in this piece for tonight, is a vote on the proposed FY 23-25 Foxborough School Bus Drivers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement.
I'll go again. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 23-25 Foxborough School Bus Drivers Association Collective Bargain Agreement as reviewed during the executive session.
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Ladani, for seconding. And so, again, roll call vote. Ms. Ladani?
Aye.
Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
Mr. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Ruder will be aye as well. 5-0, those pass. Thank you. Last thing I'll say about that, without getting into the context of any of the agreements, and this is in honor of some of the folks who were here for public comment, is that the ship to any agreement of these sizes is slow and long, and it starts well, much, much, much over a year in advance, with talks with the town in terms of looking at the monies available, and so, the district, in my experience, is in partnership with the town in terms of looking at the total pot of money that there is, and so, that is something that is impacting all bargaining units in town. Police Fire Veterans Affairs. So, that's just all I'll say on that. And our own budget process starts many months out as well, and it's something I hope many more people get involved with in the years to come. Moving on, next agenda item, approval of minutes. These are from April 5th. Do any committee members have any additions, edits, or omissions from the April 5th minutes? Or anything to discuss from them?
No changes, with me.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 5th, 2022 School Committee meeting.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay. And.
You beat me to it.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Pearson, second, closely followed by Ms. Ladani. Ms. Ladani, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, and Mr. Pearson, and I am aye as well, 5-0, so those are approved, and will get posted. Next up, our teaching and learning highlight, the Memory Project. Would you like to introduce?
I would love to introduce. I'd like to invite up to the table Ms. Kelly Arcacha, who is the department head for the art department, and she oversees, actually, K to 12 art within the district, and she has some fabulous students with her, and we'll have them introduce themselves here in a minute. The Memory Project, you'll hear about, is something that was started several years ago, and they've been able to continue where many folks that have been involved in this have not been able to continue. It's something that's quite impressive. They have a slideshow that we're going to be able to have that up on the screen, and then we have a video that's going to go as well, so, Kelly, if you want to kind of signal me, I can go through the slides when you're ready. But I will turn it over to you, to this fabulous project, is our teaching and learning highlight.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Berdus and Dr. Mello, Ms. Pakla, and school committee members for having us here. I always cherish the times that we get to highlight our students and the work that they're doing in the classroom, so we appreciate it, thank you so much, and especially after our late night last night, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna have my students introduce themselves first, just their name and their grade, and then I'll talk a little bit about the Memory Project.
Hi, I'm Teddy Dre, and I'm a senior.
I'm an Aña Singh, and I'm a junior.
I'm Mallory Meyer, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Brian Harilshu, and I'm a senior.
I'm Gavin Amara, and I'm a junior.
I am Brayden McCarthy, and I'm a junior, too.
So, these students, some of the students raised their hand if you're in graphic design two right now. We have graphic design two, we have some students who are in Senior Inc. right now, and then we have some AP students who have done the Memory Project in the past. So, we've been doing the Memory Project for three years. The Memory Project is, it's a nonprofit organization. It was started by a gentleman, the founder, whose name is Ben Shoemaker, and Ben started it in 2004. He had, after graduating from college, he had gone to Guatemala to work in an orphanage in Guatemala. While he was there, he was taking pictures, he likes to do photography and do portraits, and while he was taking pictures of the children, a gentleman approached him and said, you know, this is really important for these children, I don't know if you know this, but I myself grew up in an orphanage, and I didn't have those photos of myself as a child, or even any keepsakes of myself as a child. So, Ben heard this story, and the gentleman said to him, when you get back to the States, you should print out these photos and give them to the children as gifts, because it has that much meaning to them, and that's stuff that we don't really think about. So, that's what started the Memory Project. He came back here, he knew how important that was, how valuable, as an artist, how valuable portraits are in general, and so, he reached, did outreach to art teachers and schools across the nation and said, you know, if I connect you to these organizations in, around the world of orphanages, or children who have been through civil war or unrest, would you be willing to do portraits of these students? And a lot of teachers said, absolutely, we'll do this. So, we got connected to this in 2019. The way that I heard about it was I got an email saying that there had been a generous donor in Massachusetts who was opening it up to any schools in Massachusetts who want to be part of this. This happened at the same time that we were looking at Senior Inc. and trying to have more global connections, because Senior Inc., we deal with real clients, and we were dealing with a lot of Foxborough clients, so we wanted some more global connections, global clients, so I thought this was a perfect opportunity. So, in 2019, you can change the, 2019, we were partnered up with Pakistan, that was our first group of students that we worked with, so we had 23 portraits that were created for students in Pakistan, and how many of you did Pakistan? Yes, so Teddy and. So Teddy and Brian were in our first group in 2019. And it was, it was different, because we hadn't done portraiture or figure drawing before then. So how did you guys feel about doing that kind of work?
So I hadn't done it in the past, so it was not only a learning experience in multiple ways, because we learned about the nation that the kids were coming from and like how to actually do portraits. I also just had a really fun time working on the portrait too, and trying out like different methods of experimentation for my art.
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of the stuff we do in the graphic design classes is more design-based, but simplifying information for, for communication, like icons or infographics and things like this. So this was a whole new realm for them, doing these figure portraits, and it was all done through digital media, so Photoshop and Illustrator. So, yeah, we did Pakistan in 2019, and luckily, we were able to get those mailed out in February of 2020, so right before things closed down. Very lucky. In 2020, I reached out to Ben and said, you know, are you still doing this? I know a lot of schools are going hybrid or remote. Are you still doing this? He said, absolutely, we have a lot of students in Afghanistan, and would you be willing to join with that? So I asked Teddy's group, and I said, hey, would you be interested in doing it again? And I think everybody said, absolutely, that you wanted to do it again. So we were connected with 25 students in Afghanistan. And after Afghanistan, and I'll show you the projects, we had an extra project, so I'll talk about that, that Teddy and Brian worked on. And then this year, we were connected with, again, we signed up, we were connected with students in Cameroon. So we had 13 portraits that were created for students in Cameroon. After we delivered those in January, Ben reached back out to me. He said, you know, we have, as Dr. Berdus mentioned, we have a lot of schools who wanted to do it, but are unable to do it because of pandemic reasons. Would your students be willing to do a second one for us this year? So I asked the students and Ananya's class, and they said, again, absolutely, we'll do a second one. So they had a tight turnaround?
Yeah, we, we had like, probably like a month to do it, and like, we all tried like our hardest to like finish it with like different projects, like with other clients, like specifically for Senior Ink. We had like another client
Did you want to mention who their client was?
It was the Foxborough Music
Association.
Association that we had to like make their logos for, and we had to quickly finish that, and then also do the memory, like the extra memory project. But we were all like down to do it, because it had such a special meaning.
So they did two this year, both for Africa. So I'll let the students talk about their work. So again, this is, these are all digital portraits. They're all nine by 12, because after they're made, we print them, we put them in a sheet, we mail them to Ben, and then Ben and his group actually take it in a suitcase and fly it over to the students, and they have connections in the different countries. So Mallory, do you want to talk about your piece?
For mine, I went with Illustrator, and I tried to use different types of shapes to put together something that would create a portrait of like this girl I had. And she said that she wanted to be a doctor when she grew up, so I created a pattern and made a background for her. And we could take the creative liberty to add what clothes we wanted and what backgrounds we wanted, just to make them look like something that they wanted to be when they grew up.
These are both my projects. The one on the left is obviously the astronaut. I used Photoshop for the left one, and then the right one, I used both, actually. So the picture on the left, I took everything basically off of it, except just the face. And then on the right, it's basically the face and then the arms and everything.
And your student on the right, what did they want to be?
I think it was a lawyer, I think. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so that's something new this year. We didn't have that before, what they want to be when they grow up, so we can add that
I did these using different programs. The one on the left, I used the program Illustrator to complete it. I drew inspiration from a low poly project from the previous year of graphic design, and he wanted to be a computer engineer. And on the right, I did that doing, using Photoshop, and he wanted to be a doctor.
These are my three projects that I did. The first one, the one all the way on like the left was like with the, the, like, the sun and the moon in the sky is the Afghanistan one, which, and all three of the projects I did were on Photoshop, but they have very different like feels, because I decided to like change up like how I use like certain brushes and like how I portrayed everything. And they all have like the same theme of having like the mask pattern that like I made beforehand, and like it incorporated like their favorite colors and everything that they wanted to be and all that, which was, it was really fun to do, but hard still.
So for both of mine, I used Photoshop, and I basically just, I painted them on and just used a bunch of tools for a lot of shading in them, especially with the eyes.
So for the first one that I did on the, I believe, the left, that was for the Pakistani group. I used Illustrator for that one, and I tried to do something sort of similar to like this combination between the low poly project that was mentioned before and pointillism. And for the one on the right, so that was the one in Afghanistan, I tried to do a little skyline of Kabul in the background. It's a bit hard to tell, because it's, there's not many skyscrapers in Kabul, but that's the capital of Afghanistan, and her favorite color is also green, so I tried to make it a bit personalized like that. So it might be something that she will hopefully be happy with for a long time.
All right, so Brian, can you explain?
So we were working with Parsa in Afghanistan, and they had a scouts organization, and they wanted to make like infographics to print for them, except they couldn't find any like online images of scouts in Afghanistan. So we just made for them like a couple of different clip arts that they could put onto their infographics.
So after doing the Afghanistan portraits, Senior Ink wanted to continue that relationship. So we asked Ben and reached out for, are there any groups or organizations in Afghanistan working with the schools specifically that we can partner up with? And that's how they got this project. So these are actually pictures that the students sent us of what they want to be posed in for the posters, where they put these characters.
So for the photo scavenger hunt, they sent us a list of different places and things, events, and activities that they were curious about, like things that we would experience in our lives. And each of the students who were involved in the project went around town and around the school, taking pictures of various things.
So it's just another thing on top of their project to form that connection, that relationship, that authentic relationship? So these guys actually came up with the criteria, and then talking about different design challenges, we had to look at like typography, and how do we do things in two different languages? And like Teddy said, they each had this list, and then from our students, we sent in photos for this list, and then for the students in Afghanistan, they sent us their photos. So after each memory project, after the portraits get delivered, one of the most exciting things is we get a video back of the students receiving the portraits. So I have a clip from the students in Cameroon. We actually don't see our students' pieces, and we know that ahead of time. There's been a couple of them that we've done, like Afghanistan, we saw Ananya's person, and we saw a couple of other people. But in this case, we're not seeing them, and we knew that was going to happen, because there's usually about 2,000 to 5,000 portraits being delivered. But we at least get to see the schools and the reactions of the students.
We'll be able to see this short video clip.
And these videos are all created by Ben and his volunteer set work in the different countries to deliver the portraits.
My portrait was drawn by Kyla Thomas. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Violet. I really liked the picture, and this is what I also wish to be an artist like you. I'm very good in joy, so I'll also be able to draw other people's pictures beautiful as well. Thank you very much. I really love it. All my heart.
Back to the picture, so that the students can see who did it. And then they write a letter to their person, and they also trace their hand. They can kind of connect across countries by putting their hand on the artist's hand.
When I saw the picture, I was very happy, so I wanted to thank all the people who arranged the picture.
I kept the portrait on top of the, when they place it, my father used to keep pictures, and he insisted me to put it there.
My name is Mr. Roland Killa, and the child's name is Killer Precious Brain. I love the picture he brought. That's why I arranged it and then placed it, or preparing to make a frame and frame it and put it there, so that as he's growing in future, you'll be seeing what came out from the school.
I also thank the headmistress for a work well done, because it's not really easy, and I know that it's not even all the children that had this opportunity, that can have these friends.
Thank you very much. Would any committee members have any questions?
Chair? Thank you. What do you receive from the students? Clearly, a picture, you get to know career goal, favorite colors. What do you, how do you, what do you receive? How do you receive it? What do you use for inspiration?
Well, we receive like, they're like pictures and like favorite colors and like what they want to be, and then like, it's more like up to us kind of like how to like portray it and everything, and like how we want to show it. Like with Illustrator and Photoshop, there's like a lot of ways that we can show and like show how to like portray their portraits and everything, and like incorporate everything that like they want to be, and like include like patterns or like colors that they like. So it's really like up to us to find like a way to like make it very heartfelt towards them, and like, we don't receive anything back, because like they don't want like that, like, like that formal like connection with the kids and everything. But we, we get like the, with the video, we get to see like their reactions and like feel like gratitude due to the, like, of how hard we worked it. And like, we understand that like these kids actually really do appreciate like what we've made for them.
Thank you. And one more, I'm sorry. Has anybody actually met Ben?
So Ben lives, I want to say he lives in Wisconsin, but last year, because we had those Remote Wednesdays, Ananya was on the call, I think Teddy was on the call too, but their class got to do a Zoom meeting with Ben and ask him questions during a remote Wednesday.
That's awesome. That's a great opportunity. Every time, every time, my jaws just drops. So thank you, guys, for coming, and as I say every time, this is my favorite part of every school committee meeting. So thank you.
I got a question. So for many of you, how does it make you feel to bear your heart and soul and your creativity and your thought process for the benefit of others? What's it feel like to do that for someone that really needs, needs you to reach out to them kind?
Well, like throughout the project, you kind of like feel proud of like your work, and you keep constantly thinking about how happy it'll make someone else, and it makes you feel really like happy about it as well. And it gives you like a sense of like joy and like fulfillment as well. And you try to like pour like maybe some aspects are like unique to yourself and your artwork as well, so it's like what, like part of them is in it, but also like a part of you. So when you send it to them, it's like you're making like new connections, because at the end, you're also like, you put your hand on it, and you also write a note inside the hand or next to it, talking about yourself and like talking about anything you want to. And it's just like you're making friendships with people across the country, not the country across the world.
Well, I just want to thank you for, in a creative art world, or music world, whatever, they're very similar, in that creative space, to bear your time and your soul and just your, your own vulnerability to try something for someone else's benefit is huge. So for you to lead the way, for the rest of the members of the high school and the rest of the members of the art program, thanks for taking that risk, as well as that effort and that extra effort on someone else. So thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say thank you so much. I really enjoyed
Oh, shoot. Ms. Ladani, we're, go for it.
Oh, we can't hear.
One sec.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we have you, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to say thank you so much. I really enjoyed that video. It was so uplifting, and I mimic what Rob said about this being my favorite part of all the meetings. It really is awesome to see everything that our students do. So thank you so much for all your efforts. It clearly made those children so happy and means so much. Thank you.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I just want to thank Mrs. Arcacha for her leadership. I think in all the years I've gotten to work with you, what I've seen is a nonstop innovation for your department and making students feel authentically purposeful with their art. And I just think it's such an amazing opportunity for all of you to have that experience. So thank you for continuing to find those opportunities for students.
He's very great leadership to guide us to do that. Thank you. I appreciate that. We have a globe that we've been marking all the places that we've been doing work, so we're working on it.
Wonderful. Yes, we look forward to seeing more pins in it. Thank you so much, Ms. Arcacha. Thank you so much, students. Thank you so much, Ms. Myers-Pakla, for your involvement in this project. It really is impressive. And the project aside, the product that you folks are, the art that you're making is very, very, very impressive. So thank you so much for sharing that with the world and with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Great job.
Next up, on our agenda, we have the superintendent's update. Dr. Berdus? Next up on our agenda, we have the superintendent's update. Dr. Berdos.
Sure. So on the update, as I've started out throughout the year, just an update on the COVID numbers. We continue to see a low prevalence, which is great news across the town and as well as in the schools. Currently, there's nine cases across the district and we continue to see really low numbers. And that's updated on Wednesdays as well. The vaccination rates, we continue to track those. We really don't see much difference in those at this point since the last time that I had given those numbers at the beginning of April. Actually, there was no change for the high school, the Taylor School or the IGO School. We did see a 1% gain, if you want to call it that, at the Ahern as far as increase. And then at the Burl, there was a 3% increase. So we continue to track that because we know that that's important as far as when it comes to any contact tracing or anything like that. But the numbers really have not changed since the beginning of April. The second update is on the IGO search committee. Dr. Mello started last evening with the group. And again, represents teachers and administrators and parents for the principal position. And they'll be meeting again on Thursday. Correct. And the goal is to have interviews the week of May 9th. And then second interviews looking towards May, the week of May 16th. Correct. And Rob, thank you for volunteering to be on that committee as a school committee representation.
My pleasure.
As well. So we know that it's really important to have all the different stakeholders through that process.
Thank you.
Other updates, it's a very busy time of year. We've got AP testing that has started. We know that MCAS is going to be going on as well. We have the art show. So when we think about the Memory Project this evening, the art show Thursday night that will be taking place. I got to see a preview of a lot of the elementary art, which is, it's fascinating with what they're able to accomplish throughout the year. So that's at the Burl and the Taylor this Thursday. We've got kindergarten meet and greet as well. So busy week. And the Essentially Ellington with our jazz group will be leaving at the end of this week for Essentially Ellington. We have the Ahern Musical, Matilda, that's going to be coming up. And we just know that this time of year, time is going to fly. It always does. When we think about all of the activities, particularly at, with our seniors. Seniors' Last Day will be the 20th. I can't believe we're actually talking about Seniors' Last Day with that. And then at the same time with that graduation that will be coming up on Sunday in the first weekend of June. So I did, as you had said, as far as graduation, we understand that there are varying opinions as far as an indoor graduation and an outdoor graduation. And there's pros and cons to both. And we were, I mean, it is a decision that's made at the high school. It's not, it's not a school committee decision. And it's a decision that's made based on many different variables that I think that most people probably are not aware all of that goes into it. I just wanted to give a couple of examples. It's not an exhaustive list, but just some ideas. And so I know mentioned heat was an example. And yes, it was extremely hot. We moved it four hours earlier last year. But we were under the guidelines of the state at that time. And the only way that we could host it was to be outdoors. We, for years prior to COVID, had indoor graduation in the gymnasium. It, it has the capacity to be able to have and hold our graduation. Many schools that do hold graduation on their fields, they do it because they don't have the capacity to be able to do that indoors. And we're able to do that and not limit tickets in the gym. The other things that come along with planning, when you have an indoor and an outdoor, if you're planning for an outdoor graduation, some of the factors that come into it, absolutely, heat is something. And we know that that is a variable. Weather, you're having to set up in two different places and constantly watch the weather. And as it was stated before, you might be forced to go inside. But we had been pre-COVID for years in the gym. It allows us to have the students up on risers where they're facing and you can actually see the graduates. By being up on risers, you're able to have the live band not playing music. If we were outdoors, we wouldn't have the band playing as graduates enter and as they exit. The multiple places for setting up for outdoors versus indoors, there's a lot that goes into that. When we think about even the acoustics as an example, you can only set up a certain way out on the field. You're not going to be able to have students up in the bleachers or families. There's not enough capacity in the bleachers to have them in the bleachers. So being in the gym, you actually have a better vision, being able to see the graduates themselves. And the weather obviously doesn't come into play as much. Is it still, can it be still warm in the gym? We can. We know the capacity in the gym. But when we have all of our students as an example, like for pep rallies and all of our staff, you're getting close to a thousand with all students and staff. And it holds those numbers comfortably in the gym. We're able to fill the stands, I mean, not the stands, the bleachers with families to be able to see the graduates. So the seating, people have actually remarked and said it was better because they can see the graduates when they're coming in. There's not umbrellas that are blocking vision if you're outdoors and holding that from outside. We also understand that it's preference too. Some people like to be outside and indoors. It's not the preference. Coming out of COVID, we're really looking forward to have that element of the best of getting back to normalcy that we can as we move forward. And as we've made decisions with all of the things, we've done that in concert with our public health officials. With the capacity in the mask and the hand sanitizer and all those other mitigation strategies, staying home when sick. It is live streamed. And we also understand that people will make their decisions that are best for their families. And having it live streamed does make that available for anyone to watch. You know, one of the things in talking with Deputy Chief Tom Kenven, and he, that kind of struck with me was it's a step toward, back towards normalcy with the shadow of safety. And that when we look at people, we would have masks that are there if people want to wear them. We're going to have doors open. We're going to have the ventilation as far as with fans that would be in the gym, just like what we've done in the past. But by having it indoors, it provides a lot of other benefits that a lot of people just don't see or can even think about. It's nitty gritty, not to get into all of those details. But again, the setup for awards night, when you have the setup with students, that's a couple of days before. You're not having multiple setups in multiple locations. You're not having to move quickly based on weather. But I think that when you think about the graduates, you weren't able, they were facing forward when we were outside on the field. You weren't able to see the graduates. They weren't raised like they're going to be on risers. You're not able to do that on the field itself. But we do understand that there's pros and cons for both. In the end, we want to make it a memorable and wonderful experience for our graduates and for their families. And to be able to do everything we can with the live band, with graduates coming in and coming out, being able to see them and hear them during their speeches and hearing their names called and all of that. Those are, those are important moments to be able, as it was mentioned, to be able to have that. Can you do all of that outside? You can, to an extent. But to be able to have it indoors to where you can actually see them better and then all of the other variables that enter into that. That is the decision that was made years ago. And we're looking forward to being able to provide that venue again as we did prior to COVID.
So they don't have a voice.
Anything else?
Are there comments or questions from the committee? And then, Dr. Berdos, you said you had, I mean, I know it is early and we're, though graduation will be upon us very quickly. You'd been in communication with folks in our public health sector and their feeling about it right now are.
Yes, there are no restrictions at this point by, with any guidelines. And they are in full support of us holding it indoors.
Okay.
For, for the ceremony. And then again, looking at all of the variables that go into this, they're very comfortable in that there are, there are no restrictions at all. And we're going to be able to have masks available if people want them. We're going to live stream. There's hand sanitizer. Obviously, if people are symptomatic or not feeling well, we want them, just as we say, all of the time, to stay home.
I just have one. I appreciate all the information. I, I've experienced both at Foxborough High School. They were both unique and special. They both had pros and cons. I was at the outdoor, I was at the indoor. So I understand, I don't understand all the factors that go into the decision, but I do appreciate that, as always, it's very thoughtful. The one question I have is, is there any indication of what the student's actual preference is? And I also say that, knowing that I don't want to create divisiveness among the graduating class. But has there been any indication even from the class officers or from a representative sample of what their preference might be?
I'm not able to speak to that. I've not had any conversations with students at this point. I would just say that it's always historically been a decision that's made by the administration. Because students, just as families, are not going to really have a good understanding of all that goes into planning for graduation. It's much more complicated than what people realize.
Thank you. And then just as a follow up to that, in the years, in folks' years in Foxborough, which many of you is longer than mine, have there been capacity issues that you've come across in the, in the indoor setting?
No.
To your memory or knowledge? Okay.
We've not had to limit capacity.
Okay.
And that's, again, because we're, we're smaller. Many districts are not able to host indoors and would prefer to based on all of the variables that go into planning for such an event.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions on this or any other portions of the superintendent's update?
You know, I will comment. I ran four graduations at Foxborough High School indoors. All four were indoors when I was assistant principal. My graduation, my senior year graduating was indoors as well. And I'm exposed to four different high schools. So I've done 23 graduations. So the one great opportunity at Foxborough High School is the size of our gymnasium. That gymnasium and a half gives great flexibility to what, what schools can do. I wrestle with it as a principal. At the end of my principal's career myself, I actually moved it all inside as well because of heat. Grandparents, tents, water and all logistics to plan it out. So I do understand the reasoning for moving inside. I do absolutely understand all the logistics. There is a lot of movement parts when it comes to it. If the rain cloud comes at eight o'clock in the morning or is it going to come at noon? There's a lot of things going on with it. So I think Foxborough is in a very good position. They have capacity in the gym to put the chairs down, get the band set up in a safe environment to have them play inside as well as keep doors open and have plenty of space for everyone. So I understand the logistics of it very much so from my personal experience.
Thank you for the context, Mr. Pearson. And thank you for the update, Dr. Berdos. I appreciate it.
And that's all the updates I had for this evening.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, peace poll. Would anybody in particular like to introduce? And please come forward. Come on up. Folks, you can sit at the table. You can crowd around the table. But before you do chat, we do love to hear your name, if only because I'm remarkably forgetful.
Hi, my name is Ashley Conlin and I am the president of the Interact Club in Foxborough. First, before we introduce the others, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to take the time to tell you what this is. And congratulations on yesterday's vote. So like I said, I am the president of the Interact Club. Unfortunately, three members of our club will not be able to come. They are board officers. One is our vice president, Anya Fitzpatrick, who is a junior. The other is a secretary. Her name is Jamie Kenzel. She is also a junior. And Grace Preston, a senior, who is our treasurer. They cannot attend because of a track meet. But yeah, I just want to say thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Penders. I'm a junior at Foxborough High School. And I am filling in right now for Grace Preston as I'm not a member of the E-Board of Interact, but I am a member of the club.
Hi, I'm Jackson Palmer. I'm a freshman and I'm a member of the club and just wanted to come out to support the peace poll.
And my name is Emma Lacy. I'm a junior and I'm the publicity coordinator of the club. And we'll be starting off our presentation. We got our PowerPoint up here as well. "May Peace Prevail on Earth" is the message spread through every peace poll, an international and historic symbol of the hope for a just, equal and good world for all. It was started by Masahia Goy in 1976, following the World War II atomic bombings on Japan. These acts of war affected Goy throughout his life to a point where he thought it was up to him to promote the philosophy of the peace movement, unlike those before him. After his death in 1983, Goy's movement continued to spread and eventually caught international attention. The peace poll reached the United States in 1986. And two years later, it was recognized as a nonprofit, non-sectarian world peace prayer society and established its headquarters in New York. Since then, over 200,000 peace polls have been installed throughout every country in the world as an agreement to uphold Goy's original intention of peace prevailing on earth.
All right. I'm filling in for Anya as well. For Anya's piece, she said, "Peace and its embodiment are not just things that our club values, but also something that our diverse community at Foxborough High School is committed to." In one of our meetings, a club member regarded peace as being able to coexist without strain or conflict. And it is evident that Foxborough High School demonstrates and upholds this idea of peace. In a survey, responses from about one-fifth of the student population show that we are not just a small-town high school, but a network of different cultures, from Bangladesh to Peru, coexisting all together and learning together. While such coexistence has made Foxborough High School a peaceful and welcoming community for students of all backgrounds, we feel that by accepting the current state of our school, we are also ignoring what we can do to improve and promote peace in the school system, especially for students that are not experiencing peace in any other parts of our community. Considering the tremendous significance that peace and coexistence has in our school, we feel that it is only appropriate for the peace poll, which stands for such ideas, to be installed somewhere that all students and faculty members can see. Given this, we would like to put the peace poll in the grass area by the main entrance on the side closest to the library.
And now I'll be filling in for Jamie. Jamie says, "Language unites us." According to Madeline Dale's of the Humanities and Ethics Center at Derry University, language is expression. Language allows a form of release that nothing else can match. Whether it is a speech, a letter, a look or a prayer, language lets us form our thoughts into something tangible. We can choose to share these things or we can keep them to ourselves. Expression has no rules. It is flexible and ever-changing. To an extent, none of us share the exact same language. This is something important to every culture and its diversity that strengthens all communities. The use of dialect and dialogue is a central facet of our shared human experiences, whether that language is verbal, visual or something else, quite possibly a mixture. The survey conducted by our club shows that at Foxborough High School, students speak various other languages in their homes outside of English and the languages they learn in school. The language diversity that exists in our academic community and Foxborough as a whole is a thing to be celebrated and when represented, would make all students feel welcome.
Now I'll be filling in for Grace, as I said before. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the logistics side of the peace poll, which I think is really important for like what you guys are looking to see from us personally. So she writes, "In Foxborough High School recently, we conducted a survey in which we asked high school students to share the different languages that they speak at home and the diverse cultures that they represent. We collected this data in hopes to represent a variety of cultures on our peace poll. Our mission was to include as many of these, of these cultures as possible to show how diverse a community Foxborough can be. In our survey, 11.2% of the 161 individuals who took home the survey reported that they speak a language other than English in their home. While this may seem like a low percentage at first, the purpose of our poll is to be inclusive to everyone within our school community and the cultures that they represent. Within this 11.2%, the languages reported were Arabic, Spanish, Hindi, Mandarin, Polish, Telugu, Vietnamese and Portuguese. Since there are so many other languages spoken at Foxborough High School, our goal is to represent these cultures on our poll accordingly to symbolically spread peace throughout all of these cultures. Interact as a whole wants to make, wants to make it possible to represent these responses with different phrases or symbols on the poll itself. Within the survey, we asked the individuals if they had any specific requests for representing their cultures on the poll and we got many responses. One of these responses was "Seid Milli Falti," which means "A Hundred Thousand Welcomes" in Irish. With these ideas, we aim to make a poll that includes the cultures and languages of those who live in Foxborough and more specifically, who attend right now and who will attend Foxborough High School in the future. As far as logistics go, in terms, in terms of physically inserting the poll into the ground, we are totally ready to work with you to figure out the most efficient way to. totally ready to work with you to figure out the most efficient way to get the poll installed, and as a club, we are able to cover the cost of the full labor force that it will be required to put the poll into the ground. We have worked hard and will continue to work hard on fundraising, and we have a benefit at Interact Club is that we're also affiliated with Foxborough Rotary, and they have stated that they would graciously offer to help us cover the costs, as they too want to support this cause. Finally, we are not sure the regulations or rules that you currently have for this type of project, but are excited to work with you, given the opportunity. And consequently, we are willing to follow your lead in terms of finding the means to put the poll on the ground, if there are any specific rules required for us to do so. Our main goal, in simple terms, is to have this poll represent the peace we strive for between the cultures and languages of Foxborough."
So, as a student who comes from a diverse background, seeing peace in my community is a wildly important thing, and feeling welcomed is a bigger deal than most would consider. Coming from an inside view, the hustle and bustle of day-to-day life is quite difficult, at the least to be a teenager. Between academics, extracurriculars, going to school is rough, especially if you don't feel welcomed. However, seeing this poll and seeing something written in your language is comforting for people of cultures that may not be as acknowledged as much as others. And by installing the peace poll, we are not only promoting peace at Foxborough High School, but we are also promoting it in the Foxborough community as a whole, allowing people to express themselves and feel comforted in their own personal and school environments. That concludes.
Any questions from committee or members of the administration?
I just may add, so, you may have seen the peace poll out in front of Town Hall that was put there. There's one also at the YMCA. And I think that, in meeting with Ashley, with Mrs. Myers-Packla, and just the passion of the Interact Club, and what a perfect time to really visually show the spreading of peace. And what I think that is so great about what they have done is surveying the students and looking at the languages. So, the languages in saying "May Peace Prevail on Earth," it's a matter of what are the languages that are Foxborough High School and within our school community? And it really makes it much more meaningful, aside from just spreading peace, but it's really within the context of our schools. And so, all of the work that they've done as a club, they've been working all year on this, and the meaning behind it, and all the work that we're doing on inclusivity, I think that it really just fits in as a great visual example of an inclusive environment.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please, Dr. Mello.
Your maturity and your preparation and your dedication is so impressive, and I love that this meeting gives you an opportunity to practice your public speaking. You're outstanding at it, and I think that you'll probably all change the world. You're on your way.
Thank you.
We have some members of the Foxborough Rotary here to support us.
Oh, you. Hello.
Need to give them a shout-out. They're really helping us with this project, and the club as a whole, giving us these great life skills, such as these opportunities, helping us prepare for this, and we're really grateful for their support and really grateful for your support as well.
There really is nothing more that I love than Interact. I know that sounds like cliche, but I literally, I will pull myself out of bed if I'm like, oh, I don't want to go, and then I'm like, I have Interact tonight, I have to go to school. Pull myself out of bed, just so I can see everyone's smiling faces.
And there's not any policies, as far as from the school committee. We know that if it were, we have policies for memorials that are put. This doesn't fall within that. It's a matter of, it's really quite unobtrusive, as far as the location, and meeting with Mrs. Myers-Packla, as far as that placement of that. So, we wanted to provide, or they wanted to provide, the information about it this evening for information only, and then a vote from the school committee, if you are so inclined, at the May 17 meeting, to be able to give you a chance to digest what they've presented, and if you have any other questions between now and then.
Thank you very much. And any questions that I had, actually, as they were coming up, you were well-prepared, you quickly addressed, both in terms of facilities aspect, coordination with the high school, looking ahead at financing, and all the partnership that you've been doing, you know, with each other, with the students in our schools, with outside funders, thank you, Rotary, obviously with administration, which has many layers and facets. And so, I personally wanted to say, I'm so impressed with your coordination. It's hard to get any project off the ground, and I think it's amazing, and it's very much worthwhile. If I do have any questions, just for my part, as a single member on the committee, what I usually do is I'll forward them onto administration, and they can get them out to you, and we'd have a chance to hear them again before our May 17, or at our May 17 meeting ahead of voting.
Sounds good.
Anybody from the committee have anything else to add or ask?
Can I just ask one more question? Because I just want to make sure.
I like when you ask questions, Mr. Pearson.
Is it a singular poll, or is it multiple?
So, the peace poll is a singular poll. In our presentation, it's not up anymore, but there was a photo of all of us with the poll. It's pretty long, it's a long, white poll, and on it are RRA four languages saying "May Peace Prevail."
I think I see it now. Okay, I got it, I got it. So, that, and then, maybe this is just a down-the-road, what if we, our languages will expand, I'm confident that's where we're going to go. Do you just keep adding to the poll, or do you add more polls? Is there a day when we need more polls? I guess, I guess. And one of the photos, one of the photos in your presentation had a line of polls, right? I saw that too, so I was just trying to visualize it. So, I'm guessing it could be more than one, maybe?
So, the surveys that we put out with languages are basically a starting point. I don't anticipate that all those languages Alex listed will take up the entire space of the poll. So, should, you know, we continue these surveys down the line as the student body comes in and out of Foxborough High School, and we see that there are, you know, changing languages that kind of take a larger percentage of the student population, we can certainly go ahead and redecorate it in some form, add to it. It's definitely not something to just stay the same, because our Foxborough community isn't staying the same.
Makes sense to me, so thank you for that.
But it is a single poll.
It is a single poll, yes, yes. Yeah, but it explains it. And I wanted to just thank you personally. You just said that this makes you tick and makes you wake up. So, I'll tell you what makes me wake up, working with kids most of my life, is when a senior sits before me and puts their emotion and their passion on their sleeve and speaks to it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, I want to thank you guys as well, and I certainly want to thank the Rotary for their support. I know that Interact has been a big thing in our community, and the Rotary has certainly been a big thing in our community for a number of years, but it's, I'm really thrilled to see that there's still such engagement between the two organizations, because I think we all benefit from that. So, thank you, and thank you guys as well.
Well, thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to hearing more at the next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next up on the agenda is the 2022-2023 Subcommittee Appointments. And so, this is the part where we, as a committee, discuss, vie for, or perhaps simply just accept, appointments to the two main standing committees that we work with, which is the Budget Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee. We'll start there, and then we have a few other various responsibilities which we can address at an upcoming meeting, should people like to revisit those. But for now, let's discuss folks who would like to be on a Budget Subcommittee and Policy Subcommittee. Can I ask a point of information from folks around here? Is it still, is it the practice that the chair doesn't serve on one of those standing committees, or is that just an artifact?
That is correct.
Okay, then I guess that means between Ms. Ladani, Ms. Raymond, Mr. Canfield, and Mr. Pearson, we should decide what we'd like to do as far as committee assignments, and hopefully have action on that tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Please, Mr. Canfield.
Just to put the stake in the ground, I've not had the opportunity to serve on the Policy Subcommittee, and would like to have that opportunity moving into the next year. It's just, I have served on the Budget Subcommittee, but I would like to expand my knowledge and serve on the Policy Subcommittee.
And by contrast, I'll mention that I was on the, I was on the Budget Committee this past time, and I will be going off, so it seems like we have some room for movement. Is there anybody who would like to also serve on the Policy Committee, either for the, well, I guess for all of us, it'd be the second time at this point? Or if anybody else wants, prefers budget?
Yes, sir.
I think I would like, if I can have a say in this, I am the most junior member, but I really enjoyed the Policy Subcommittee this last year, but where it's, I'm only one year in, I'd love an opportunity to take a look at the budget and sort of cut my teeth on that Subcommittee, if I can speak up and ask.
That's fine. And Ms. Raymond, what's your preference, if you had one?
Well, I was going to say, I've been on the Policy Subcommittee for two years. I had done Budget through advisory, so I'm happy to shift over to Budget, because I haven't done that on the school committee yet.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, do you have a preference?
I've done both, so I'm good to go either way, but I think, I think we already-
You being the veteran.
Well, I guess, yeah. So, it sounds like to me, we have two for the Budget, and I'll slide to Policy. I'm 100% fine with that.
And if that's amenable to all four members, then we will proceed with that, with Mr. Pearson and Mr. Canfield on the Policy Committee, and Ms. Raymond and Ms. Ladani on the Budget Subcommittee. Thank you so much for serving in that capacity for the next year. And as I alluded to, we can wait for the next meeting to discuss any of the other various responsibilities that we do. Ms. Ladani, that would be your opportunity to perhaps pass a few things off, if you so choose. Moving on to the next, oh, sorry, and do I need to make a formal vote? Yeah.
So, that's by consensus?
That's by consensus, I believe.
I'm going to make sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, thank you for checking, because I was doing that by memory, which is a very bad idea for me. Okay, thank you. Next up, the warrant signing procedure, and it, just for folks at home, context there is, we had engaged in shifting the warrant signing procedure this, over this past year, and periodically, we bring that item forward, just to make sure that both administration and the members of the committee are comfortable with how we're doing that, and to entertain any changes should people wish to do so. So, can I ask somebody to summarize what we've been doing for the last year? Or I can take a stab at it. Ms. Ladani, do you mind?
I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you.
Over the last year, I have been responsible for going and being the signer for the warrants. Every week, I go, I go through the warrants at the superintendent's office, and then I sign them. I often ask a lot of questions, but any item that is over 25,000 is put into a report and singled out. All the warrants are available anyway to the entire committee, but, so, those are just highlighted and added into the other materials in with the package, so it's kept for public record, which wasn't the practice before I started. Really, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. The warrants are ready on Fridays by noon, and they can be signed up to Tuesdays, I think, by noon, but typically, I go in Friday afternoon and just sign off on them. So, we did flip to that. We voted last year, flipping to one person signing the warrants as opposed to needing a quorum, so three people having to physically go and sign them. I think I summed it up.
You did, thank you. And may I ask, from Mr. Euken's side, superintendent, assistant superintendent, how has that been working for you? And I want to make sure that, you know, we're not creating an undue burden for you all.
No, actually, it minimizes the issues on our side, because we were chasing at times to be able to get three members in based on their schedules, so it did streamline that for us. And as Sarah just noted, you know, any of the bigger issues anyways, you all get in your package. So, instead of just three seeing it, now all five see it. So, I think that's, I think it's positive all the way around, as long as it obviously works for one of the members to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree, you know, just to think of, over the past couple of years, us all receiving emails, who's signing, when are we going to sign, us not knowing, you know, if you can make it or not, and waiting until the last minute, and I think, I said this before, when we went this road, you know, Janet not having to scramble around to make sure someone is going to be there has been a huge help. So, I'm in all support if someone would continue to do it. I'm fine if Sarah would like to continue to do it, but I don't want to foist it on her either.
Exactly. How do other members feel?
I'm fine to continue. I look forward, for right now, unless there's a reason why I can't continue, I'm very happy to continue going in. I look forward to the work and the visit, and I do ask a lot of questions, so, and I'm always happy to answer them. So, if you guys are happy with the job that I'm doing, unless somebody else would like to do it, I'm happy to continue.
Is there anybody else who would prefer to do it as a rotating responsibility? Well, seeing that, I think we can, by consensus, decide that Ms. Ladani, if you would be so gracious to continue in that role until our next review of this policy, I would very much appreciate it. So, thank you. All right, moving along. Curriculum review schedule, proposed revision. Dr. Mello, do you care to introduce?
Yes, so, next year, as you all know, and for people watching at home, we have a six-year curriculum review cycle that the school committee approves. We are projecting out around 10 years on our curriculum review cycle. Sometimes we make changes when the, that are aligned with the release of curriculum frameworks, or if there's something else precipitating a need to look at a specific curriculum area. In this particular case, we are frustrated, I suppose is the right word, that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has been working on a revision to the comprehensive health framework, which would fall under our wellness curriculum review, K through 12. They began working on this revision in 2018, and it was projected to be completed around 1920, so it's understandable that with COVID, there was a pause. However, as of today, on their website, there is no current update or projection when those will be completed. So, we don't want to get into a curriculum review situation where we could complete the review and then be followed by having new standards come out. So, the proposal on the table is to postpone the wellness curriculum review for 2324, as opposed to having it next year, and to switch it with technology. And we had hoped to do a review of technology during the COVID year, and it got postponed. And it's not a formal, it wasn't going to be a formal curriculum review, but now, as we look at this opportunity in our curriculum review cycle, considering the fact that the digital literacy computer science standards were released in 2016, that actually coincided with our texting committee, that was probably their final project that they worked on, was thinking about how to integrate those, with the change from our technology integration specialists to be the digital learning coaches, with our implementation of one-to-one technology, and the need to have systems in place for things like refresh cycles and repairs, and all the things that we've been sort of doing, because we've had to, in a little bit of a more reactive mode. This is a chance for us to slow down, assess where we are, and plan ahead. So, in terms of teaching and learning, we would be looking at the standards and how they're integrated into our classrooms. In terms of the actual hardware, software, we can look at that, and in terms of our long-term planning. So, the proposal on the table is to switch wellness for next year and move up and have technology be this upcoming school year. Does anybody have any questions?
Has, I know there's been delays with releasing standards in other areas in the past, has this been a, in your time here, have you done switches like this before?
We have, and so, one, the one that comes to mind is around science, where we've had to move this. We've also moved certain things up in the curriculum review cycle, if something came out. So, this year, we actually moved up the ELA curriculum review, because we had new standards come out during the last couple of years that hadn't been looked at, and we had a transition in that position with a new ELA curriculum director, and it seemed really important that we took a look at that sooner rather than later. So, yes, we do it when we feel there's a real benefit to the district and the work that needs to happen, and that aligns with our plan for success. We know we have a huge piece of that under that plan, so, yeah, it's been done before.
Okay.
And may I?
Please.
One of the other considerations is, when you look at what the order is, it's important for some curriculum areas that could end up being big-ticket items with the budget, that, for instance, if you have English language arts, you don't want that to back up to math. You need to have some of the areas that are not going to have as much of a budget impact and have those spread out. And so, even with the switch, it's still, it allows for that in not putting some heavy curriculum areas that have particular budget considerations that can make a difference.
Excellent point. The one thing I also left out is, just a week and a half ago, the- the Digital Learning Curriculum Standards Curriculum Guide was released. So that is new and this committee would give us an opportunity to really dig into that curriculum guide, see where we're actually meeting those standards and where we have room to improve. And then just like any other curriculum review, we'll come out with recommendations at the end of that cycle.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any committee members have questions or comments? The only thing I'll say is I appreciate the forward planning. I appreciate the six-year cycle and I appreciate the transparency when it comes to this. This is something that, this is longstanding practice in the district. And for folks at home that wonder how we pick what we're going to be teaching, this is it. So thank you all very, very much for your thoughtfulness. Mr. Canfield?
Do we have to vote this?
Sorry, I had one question.
Sure.
The additional handout, was that related to this change?
Yes. So I wanted to just give you the, this is actually a screenshot of the Department of Ed's page from the Comprehensive Health Framework, showing that they sort of stalled on their progress in June of 2019 and there has been no update since then. So what it says right now is details will be posted once confirmed to present the draft to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Ed for release and public comment. And there is no update on that in terms of a timeframe.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Based on what they haven't done yet.
Yes.
Correct. And I understand. I mean, with COVID, they've clearly had different priorities as well.
I would move the, that we accept the proposed curriculum review cycle as given to us.
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Ladani, second. And we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Ladani?
Aye.
Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
Mr. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Rutter is aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, school committee to vote to reappoint Dr. Amy Berdows as a voting member of the Bye County Collaborative, or BYECO, Board of Directors for the upcoming 2022-2023 year. Is there any comment that we need?
This is just an annual vote that you do as a school committee. So I represent Foxborough as, when we think about, you represent the community as a school committee. Superintendents represent the Bye County Collaborative Board as their overseer. So that is something that needs to be voted each year.
Absolutely. Any questions or comments from the, from the board or any member of the administration?
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Dr. Amy Berdows as a voting member of the Bye County Collaborative Board of Directors for the 20,000, 2022-23 school year.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond, for seconding. And we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Ladani?
Aye.
Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
Mr. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson and Mr. Rutter is aye. 500. Thank you. And congratulations, Dr. Berdows. Such a surprise. And thank you for your work with BYECO. For those that don't know, BYECO is a, is a resource for us. And it's a, basically it's a local comparison pool for us and we can, we collaborate with schools in the Bye County area, correct?
Yes. And some of our out-of-district students that belong to a collaborative, if we're not able to meet their needs here, by having the collaborative, which is 19, Bill, is that correct? 19 districts with BYECO. So as a member district, that's why superintendent serves as the Board of Directors. But we have a handful of students that attend the collaborative and they have actually rented space in the Ahern from us. So there's some BYECO programs right here in Foxborough.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your partnership with our surrounding communities. Next up, BYECO Quarterly Report from April 2022. Dr. Berdows?
So this is something that I share with you quarterly. And we meet monthly as far as the Board of Directors here. And Jean Sullivan, who's the executive director, she provides the quarterly update. And so you have that in your packet. I'll just call out a couple of highlights here. One of the things that we've been talking about a lot this school year, as far as the Board of Directors, is enrollment with BYECO. They're down about 20 students of what they've had in the past. They've got an enrollment right now of about 199 students. And they have a number of referrals. You can imagine that in this time period for different therapeutic programs that they have and the needs for referrals. You also have within your packet, you can see when students have left the BYECO programs. And that may be because they're coming back to their districts. They may have graduated. There's, there's a whole host of reasons. And that's all outlined in your quarterly report too. And obviously, when you see students that are returning to their home district, that's, that's awesome to see. A couple of other things just to point out is they are also in the middle of their strategic planning process and they're using Dr. Ruth Gilbert Whitner for the Planning for Success, just as we did here in Foxborough. And it's representative of many stakeholders. And one of their stakeholders that is participating with them is our own Corey Michaelazik. And he is on the Strategic Planning Committee and developing their next plan for success. They are working just as we are in diversity, equity, inclusion. You can see that they've had a focus on professional development as well for their staff. And that will no doubt end up being a part in their Plan for Success as they move forward. And the only other piece that they have here is their Director of Finance and Operations is retiring.
Okay.
And when they went out to look for a replacement, they were not able to find a successful candidate for that position. And so they have an interim business manager, basically, that's coming in. So you see that as that last kind of notation there as an interim director. Any other questions on their quarterly report?
Any committee members have questions? Well, no, thank you so much for including that update for us, Dr. Berdows, and for your continued service on the board. Last, other matters. Any members of the administration or committee have other matters? Ms. Ladani, please. Shocker.
You know I love, this is my, this is my second favorite part of the meeting, talking about all my happy stuff as the liaison to the Recreation Department. So first thing I want to say is Farmers Market is definitely coming back. Just a reminder, it's coming back Thursdays from 4:00 to 7:00, starting on June 2nd. Secondly, the work is really coming along at the town pool. I'm not sure when that will be open, but they're saying sometime in June. I want to thank Kelly Bishop from National Honor Society over at the high school. She continues to provide the Rec Department with wonderful students for all the fun events. And right now, I pulled it up, I don't know if you can see, you probably can't, Touch a Truck. Oh, no, it didn't work. I thought it was going to work. Touch a Truck is coming back May 14th from 10:00 to 12:00. And we have some wonderful, I believe there's four or five National Honor Society students that are going to be volunteering. So thank you very much for that communication, that partnership. And again, to all the students who just can't wait to volunteer to help make these events happen. So thank you very much.
Nice. Ms. Raymond, any other matters? And thank you for being here. Mr. Canfield, other matters?
No, no. Wow, I can make some up.
No, man, you're good. Mr. Pearson?
The only thing I was going to mention, you already mentioned the Ellington Festival for the jazz band. So I can't go on, I can't miss it because that's a music thing for me. But just to once again congratulate the jazz band, the Foxborough High School Jazz Band. And if I have it right, I think they just mentioned it at the POPS this weekend that of the 27 years of the Ellington Festival, which actually started when I was a band director and I actually got the music my first year, I think Foxborough has attended 20 times. I think we all probably know that and we say that every year, but it's just that good. It's just that stellar. It's, it's North America. The Ellington Festival is North America, includes Canada too. So 20 years out of 27, this jazz band made it.
And it's not, and that's an auditioned, you have to send an audition tape to.
Yeah.
Be selected to.
Blind tapes too. They're all sent in blind.
Really?
So they, and the jazz musicians that rate the blind tapes are truly the finest in the world. Out of, you know, where, I was going to say out of New York City, but they're probably from all over.
Sure.
And they, you just play. It's great. So congratulations to the entire program too. It's not just, it's not just, it is Aaron Bush and the kids at the high school, but they had to get there from somewhere, right? They had to start somewhere and get there. So congratulations to everyone.
Jacob, any other matters? Grace?
No, I don't think so.
Sure, you want to be like Mr. Canfield and make something up?
I think Jacob's really excited about Touch a Truck Day.
Yes, Jacob's very excited about Touch a Truck. That's good.
Little brother, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Perfect.
That's big. See, Jacob, there you go. Now you've got something to do. Mr. Euken?
No, I'm good.
Dr. Mellow?
Just that we had, just escape me, math mornings this week at the elementary schools for first graders where families could come in and the first grade students taught their families math strategies and math games. And the houses were packed. I think people are excited to be back in the schools. And they also had a little, once the students left, our curriculum director, Noel Hendrickson, for Math and Science, actually explained to parents how we are building the Foundation for Algebra, starting in first grade, and why we teach math the way that we do, and building some understanding of the strategies. Nothing but glowing reviews. And it was a joyful, joyful event at every elementary school. It was a success. So I just want to thank her and all the parents and families for coming. It was awesome.
Thank you. Mr. Euken?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to mention that the, we were able over the April vacation to actually make the Taylor School playground accessible. We had been able to get one of our local contractors to make one of the outside ramps that brought the children out of the school fully accessible. And then we went into the actual playgrounds and put in the rubber port in place to give the children access to all around the different items there. And, and thanks to the DPW for, for giving us a hand as a partner in that one as well. So I think it came out very well. It does make all three elementary schools have totally accessible playgrounds. And it really is the way it should be. So we did get that finally done.
Thank you. That's, that's an excellent update. I really appreciate it. And I thank you for your continued partnership with the town. Mr. Canfield?
I had two. One is just a reminder, the town meeting is this upcoming, upcoming Monday.
It is.
It is our responsibility as taxpayers in this town, as members of our community, to try to attend that meeting if we can. It is at 7:30 at the high school. And then the second one was, Dr. Berdows, you gave us some great dates as part of your update. Art show and a couple of events. If you wouldn't mind, just, I didn't jot them down. I apologize. Just reminding everybody what those dates are?
Yes. So, and I'm glad you pointed that out because what I said as far as the art show, I said it's Thursday. That's the meet and greet for kindergarten. So the Burl and Taylor Art Show is Wednesday at 6:30. And the kindergarten meet and greet is on Thursday, 6:00 p.m.
As in tomorrow, Wednesday?
Wednesday is the art show, tomorrow at 6:30 for Burl and Taylor. And the kindergarten meet and greet's on Thursday at 6:00 p.m.
And that's at each school?
Yes.
All right, get there. Thank you. Any other updates that we missed? Dr. Berdows?
The only other one that I had is just a reminder, and they've been sent out through email through K-12 Insight, the Culture and Climate Survey, that we've extended an additional week to be able to get more participation, but that survey will close on Friday.
Yes.
But again, we're going to, we're sending out reminders again this week if folks can please, you know, take that survey because it does provide really good, rich information for us in planning, district-wide and then by-schoolwide.
Well, folks who at home are hearing that, they take it seriously. We all take it seriously. So please fill it out because we base a lot of looking at strategic goals and picking things based off of family feedback from them. So thank you again for doing that. And I have no other matters except to say thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Ms. Ladani, how do you vote?
Rob seconded.
Aye.
And Rob seconded, thank you. Ms. Raymond, aye? Mr. Canfield? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So 500, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everybody.